Why don't we get started? I concur to order the Norton School Committee meeting for Thursday, February 4th, 2021. Sort of already, we're into Thursday, so we're almost done with a pretty crazy week. So thanks Karen and all of your team. I know it has not been easy and we really appreciate it. But we can just sort of start right with the agenda. Vote to approve minutes of January 7th, 2021, open meeting. I assume everybody was able to review. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have one comment. I'd like to make a change just because it reads odd. I don't know if this is normally how we do it. But on the second page, or page three, I should say, first, the first motion, it has a 4-1-0 vote tally.
Right.
It should be 4-0-1 because I was not a no vote, I was abstaining.
That's correct. That is correct. We'll correct that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for noticing that, Dinesh.
Yep, no other corrections for me.
So seeing no other corrections, we can vote to approve the minutes with that corrected change. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I don't think I see Dion. So I don't see Dion, correct? I'm not just missing him?
I believe he's absent tonight.
Okay, thank you. And then I am a yes. Perfect. Sheri Warren?
I've reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, January 8th, 2021, $681,989.29. January 22nd, 2021, $311,257.99. And then school payroll warrant, December 31st, 2020, $988,275.34. And January 14th, 2021, $1,114,195.2. I wish to enter them into public record.
Great, thank you. Joe, can I just ask a quick question? I'm just looking. We also have minutes in our... Oh no, that's sorry, that's something different. Forget it, sorry. We are going to move on. Malia and Zoe, welcome. We'll do our student representative updates.
Hi. So I actually just had a little bit different this week. So I've been thinking about how a student rep, Zoe and I, can involve students a little bit more. So about a week ago, we had a student council meeting and I proposed an idea of reaching out to the principals and getting some input from some real live students. And Speck was nice enough to help us get the ball rolling by sending out an email. And we have some quotes from students all ages for you tonight. So Zoe and I have decided to keep these students anonymous. But I hope you guys are able to enjoy the world while you're at it. So I'll start with the LG. Did both second and third grade students thoughts on live streaming? One student said Mondays are the only day I like it. The other days, I have three meetings, that is just too much. Another student said, "I like it. It's the second best thing to be in school. I can see everyone." Student number three said, "It's good. We don't even have to wear masks like school. I can see the other cohort and this is good because my BFF is in the other cohort." Student number four said, "I mean, it's good, except for my internet troubles." Five said, "I don't know. I could stay in bed later if all they have me do is a slideshow." And Zoe, you're covering the JCS.
I have kind of like a little bit of summary of quotes, but a first grader said that it's fun because they can see all their friends. And then a couple of third graders said that they think that they get to learn more when they're live streaming rather than doing it by themselves. They also said that they think that live streaming is good and bad. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's okay, but because it's shorter. But then on Mondays, they don't really like it because they're on for a really long time and they don't get many breaks. Malia, do you have the yell?
Sorry, I have the yell. So Mr. Gagin interviewed a class of fifth graders. One commented, "Some things just aren't fun when you have to wear a mask." Another student said that there is a benefit to fewer students in class. "I can focus easier and I can get my teacher's attention as before. I don't like at home days because I can't get my teacher's attention." Mr. Gagin also told us that many of the students lamented the cafeteria arrangement and missed talking to their friends. He also mentioned that the overall feelings of both cohorts was how when we pushed into school a year ago, they can't believe how much their feelings have changed. A year ago, they might love to be told they only have to go to school half the time and now they know that that is something they hope can never have to do again. We talked about how the saying, "The grass is always greener on the other side," or "Be careful when it rains more, it just might come true," could represent them now. I think that's a really good representation of everyone nowadays. I really like that quote. So Zoe, do the next one.
The middle school, they had a student council meeting about live streaming overall. A lot of students were really verbal about all their opinions and everything. It was a little bit of both good and bad. They said that it gives more of a chance to ask their teachers questions verbally, but then it also divides the class if the teacher's focused on the in-person kids rather than the at-home kids or vice versa. And it takes away time from the kids who are in-person learning. And they said that when the kids stream into the livestream, that it takes up a lot of time just to do the attendance. They also said that they used to finish their schoolwork earlier in the day. Now the day is extended and they're on their Chromebooks longer. They also said that it keeps people from putting work off and it makes everyone get up earlier and start working. Then I'll just move on to the high school. But the high school, one note is that the DECA kids did great at districts and a bunch of kids placed top 10. So that was a very good accomplishment. And then moving on to states. And then on live streaming, some kids feel as though that it's hard to pay attention when their teachers are teaching and their camera doesn't have to be on. So some kids actually do end up falling asleep and they doze off. And it's also that some classes, you just, you go onto the Google Meet and you just sit there because you have to. So it's not much learning there. But other classes, it is easier to catch up on work if you miss a day of school. And with a lot of kids being in quarantine, I think that that's a major factor. If you are missing school, you can still go on the livestream and see what's happening in your class. And some teachers actually do do full lessons if they choose or if they're behind for some reason or because of internet issues, they didn't get to do it last class. So they have a stay on and we take notes as if we're in school. So I think it's really good and how it mimics what we used to do, just being in school. So I like that part about live streaming. I'm basically almost alone with that because a lot of the high school students are not liking it at all.
So with the high school, I'm kind of in the middle of the live streaming. I think that when teachers do it well, they do it well and it works. When they can, like Zoe said, when they go lesson and stuff. You also have the other end of the spectrum with teachers who just leave it running and you watch a class happen, you know, watch kids talking and stuff like that, which is a little interesting. I think maybe for the high school, the schedule is definitely a little bit confusing with the live streaming. You're being first 15 minutes of class. You run into the issue with stuff like what is the first 15 minutes of class is going to be and when you're going to... It gets kind of confusing, but I think that it's good to have more in-class time than we were having. As much as a lot of people don't like live streaming, I think it's a little bit closer to what school used to feel like. Yeah, I think that's basically why I feel like live streaming.
So I think, Malia and Zoe, thank you. I don't know if you have anything else to offer, but I just wanted to kind of share a quick thought that I had. I think that sort of sharing information from our actual student body is really helpful for all of us. I think as individuals, I know as a school committee, we're not in the schools. We get a lot of information. We're in contact certainly with administration, with staff. But it's always nice to have our student body involved. And I don't know if this is a document that maybe you could just maybe put together on maybe a Google Doc or something and share it with us just so we can have some of that as sort of anecdotal data, just to really kind of offer us that insight to see. We know how difficult it is and we really love to sort of hear from students. And it does sound like very similarly to life in general. Some things work really well for some and don't work really well for others. But we really want to try to find a way that we can use the needs of our student body, of our teachers. So if you don't mind sharing that with us, that would be really great.
Sure, I would share that. I usually use a Google Doc and I kind of condense it all. If you want, I'll start sharing that. And I can also CC anyone who wants to be CC'd on the emails too, on the action.
Thank you. That would be great. So I don't know, Zoe, Malia, if I cut you off before you were completed or not. Did you have any other information to share?
I think just one thing was that another little highlight at the high school was that the juniors and seniors got welcomed, or the high school welcomed many alumni from colleges and they provided advice to us as juniors and seniors. That was something really interesting. We got to see those kids who left and went to college or stayed at home and did remote college, but it was really interesting. So that was something fun that we did. But overall, no, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing updates. Any comments? Any... We really do appreciate all of the work that you're doing to sort of gather all of this information and to give us updates at the schools. I think that in the midst of these really difficult times, it's nice to know. I mean, we clearly always want to be the best we can be. So it's really nice to know how our student body is feeling, how our teachers are feeling and staff. So thanks for kind of representing our students. We really appreciate it.
Carolyn, I just have a question.
Sure, Sheri.
I know we've talked about this before, but, and girls, I love how you kind of brought the students' outlook into things, but I wonder, because I have two high school students and it always drives me crazy when I peek in their rooms when they're doing work and everyone in a livestream is, has their video off. To me, it would seem very difficult for a teacher to teach a class when kids are not in front of them. Is there a way to find out, and I don't know, maybe it goes more to, I know Ethan and Amy are on the call, to know how teachers are feeling about that? To me, it just, I just don't know how they can teach when kids are all hidden.
So we actually, or go ahead.
No, I was going to ask you to respond. Thanks, Mr. Dolman.
Sure, so actually, just give me one second. Going into this, we, when we started live streaming, we actually had a meeting with our academic coordinators in order to discuss sort of some ideas for guidelines we wanted to put out for students. So I can actually share with you, if I can pull it up here really quickly, what the teacher's perspective was. Because we did a survey asking that very question of whether or not, basically, how much they agreed with the statement that students should be required to have their cameras on. I can't find the actual numbers here, but it was essentially about 25% were neutral, about 25% strongly agreed, and then the other half of the teachers disagreed. Or excuse me, the other way around, half of the teachers agreed and then about a quarter strongly disagreed, and then about 25% or so were neutral. So with that, we had a robust discussion with the members of our academic coordinator team and just sort of settled on the language that we were going to really encourage students to have them on. But we still felt that it was important to give students the opportunity to not be on screen. If they kind of got out of bed and were projected in front of their classmates and those types of things, that would do something to present or to protect and stop some of the anxiety that they might feel about joining the class. And ultimately, we said if they join the class with a camera off, that was better than not joining the class because they had to have the camera on. And that's kind of where we landed with it.
Something that I think Dr. Byetta, you and I had spoke about, I'm not sure if I was speaking to somebody else. I know initially there were concerns and worries about kind of sharing personal space, you know, on film, excuse me, on Zoom. And one of the things I think you and I spoke about, Dr. Byetta, was, is there a way that Norton could create a virtual backdrop that everybody would potentially need to use? So, you know, everybody has the same backdrop. I don't know if it's just sort of a purple something with an N in the corner or so that nobody really could distinguish individual space, location, housing, whatever. You know, if they were in their bedroom or at the kitchen table, all of that would be, you know, extremely confidential if that was something that could be an option so that maybe it might invite more participation using, turning on their cameras. I don't know if it would or not, but I do sometimes think, even me, I kind of have to look around and see, you know, what's kind of sticking out and does my, you know, background look appropriate? Like, so I think that maybe for students, it might be something to consider.
Yeah, I'll talk to the tech department if there's an opportunity for it to send something out to all students that they could then choose if they wanted to actually use it. Easy enough?
I just want to mention too that Google Meet actually already has that feature where students can go in, they can wear their background or they can choose another background. You know, sometimes Joe's on the beach and, you know, Casey's in a field of flowers or, you know, you could pick something that kind of goes with your mood too.
Yeah, I think Zoom does it too, of course. So I just thought, you know, and I think that if we gave students the opportunity, like you sort of shared Jen, to kind of choose a background. I just thought if we wanted to be consistent and invite students to maybe participate more, kind of with a little bit of being anonymous where they are located when they're doing their Zooms, it just might be something to consider if we had kind of a universal Norton public school backdrop. Whether it's for a Google Meet or for a Zoom or whatever.
I think a lot of kids also like the background. Like I know I have a lot of classes, like a ton of kids will start picking like one background and then we'll all have it as like, just like we'll all do it, but like, okay, we're all in flowers now. What are you going to do about it? So I think a lot of kids actually do utilize that feature on Google Meets. Like Jen and me also said, I think you can actually input your own background. So if you did want to have like a purple N or something, I think we have technology to do that, but I'm not sure.
I didn't mean to hijack the student rep update, but it's just, since it was brought up, and Ethan, I appreciate you answering. I kind of put you on the spot there. But I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So 50% of the teachers thought that kids should be on video?
So actually, I did have the opportunity to pull up the results and they were kind of interesting in that, like I said, it was about 50% or 53.1% of 49 respondents who either agreed or strongly agreed that students should be mandated to have their camera. Almost a quarter, 22.4% were neutral. And then of the rest, that was about 20% strongly disagreed and a very small fraction, about 7% disagreed. So it was, people had very strong opinions about allowing students to have the, of not having the camera on, where about half of the students, the faculty that responded anyway, wanted to have the cameras there. So again, that was where we kind of landed on a little bit stronger language of really suggesting and encouraging cameras and then still sort of allowing teachers to make the decision for their class. And if they requested that students have their cameras on, that they would do it. We tried to kind of split the middle there and acknowledge both of those viewpoints.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just, I've heard from being in the background, teachers kind of trying to engage the class and ask questions and there's just nothing because you can see all the backgrounds and not kids' faces. So I just don't know if it's something that needs to be brought up again. I don't know. I just figured I would mention it tonight. Thank you.
We did ask the question, you know, are students more engaged when they have their cameras on? And that might be, and I don't know, we don't know. It might, it was kind of up for debate as far as whether or not that did lead to better results as far as engagement or not. So that's where we were.
Thanks, everybody.
Just to add like another student point of view, I think a lot of it is coming from the fact that kids are at home and they don't want to be doing the work. And so when they turn their camera off, they're completely able to go and do something else. They go and they call their friends and they're just on a call. They go and they play video games. Like when you don't have to be physically seeing what I'm doing right now, then they can just do something else. And I think that's stemming from a lot of why the camera's not on. And yeah, they may say like, oh, like I don't like my personal, like, background right now. Change your background, like you have that option and they know that. But I think a lot of it is just that they don't want to do the work, they don't want. Or actually, some of the teachers actually do project our faces on the screen and they think of it as a way to have the whole class engaged with each other, but it also creates some anxiety for some kids that, oh, my face is on the whole screen. Everyone can see me. So I think that's another thing. But even on Mondays, when everyone's on the Google Meet, no one turns their camera on just because no one wants to be doing it. So I think even if there was a little bit more push, then it would be a little better. Like some teachers are doing it if you talk, if you say something, if you have a question, turn your camera on and then ask the question. So that's getting some kids a little more involved, but it's also that they're not involved when their camera's off.
I think a lot of it too is, like you just said, like the anxiety point of view from it, where it's like, I do have teachers who project it on the board. Like I just don't need that. I'm in my pajamas, like, I'm at school, but I'm not prepared to be at school. I don't want to be on the board. And so it's stuff like that, like I'll, I turn my camera on because I feel bad. Because, you know, if you're a teacher, you don't want to teach to a bunch of gray ends. You know, it's just not, it's not engaging. But I think that at the same time, maybe like Zoe said, like maybe turn your camera on when you want to answer a question or something. There's ways to be engaged without having to have your little Zoom square open the whole time. We can get more people engaged like that.
I think for me, I'm sorry, Mr. Dolman, go ahead.
Oh no, just for other context too, I talked to seven or eight folks who are having schools, are in schools that do the same model that we're now doing with the live streaming simultaneous with that. And it was really a mixed bag. There were, I think, three schools that required cameras and then four or five that didn't. Some of them also talked about sort of connectivity issues as well as that the camera with the voice and the feed of the video makes it laggy. And that was something that they wanted to allow for students to really have the audio. So it was a little bit all over the map and I don't think there's necessarily one agreed upon way to do it.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll ever sort of have this definitive answer. I think this is again, sort of a personal choice in a lot of ways. I think something that both you and Malia and Zoe said kind of just captured my attention was that a couple of things that actually kind of maybe made me feel a little bit sad or a little bit, just, it made me start to think like, we have to rethink this. Is that you sort of made comments like, students are sort of in their pajamas and they don't want to do the work. But bottom line is that we are still a school, a school. And whether students are sitting at home at 8:30 or sitting at a desk at 8:30, the sort of expectation, and I do understand exactly where you're coming from and this is sort of that place where we need to figure this out. The expectation should still be that the students are going to perform up to their abilities, up to sort of the expectation set by the classroom teacher, whether they are sitting at home or sitting in front of them at a desk. And that kind of is how, is maybe something we need to think about more. Is how do we get students to recognize that whether they're, you know, doing a remote day at home or they're in front of the teacher, that the accountability should still be the same? I don't know where that comes from. I don't know. I guess that's the part that just kind of worries me a little bit. Is that kind of the remote days of the hybrid option are being kind of seen as just sort of no days when that's really not the goal or the expectation. So I think you just sort of raised some really important points, just really, things that we should really be thinking about and considering. And I can imagine that sitting at home in front of a computer is extremely different. We're all doing it, we're doing it for our jobs and we're doing it for sort of things that we've never used our sort of connectivity via the internet before. But I think we just have to think about that a little bit.
Ms. Gallagher, just, you know, this is a very interesting discussion because it has a lot of issues that administratively, I know we've spoken about. I know the teachers speak about, but I have almost zero responsibility or zero authority on what happens in someone's home. This is a parent issue as far as I'm concerned. So I'm just going to say it because I was getting into trouble for saying, parents need to parent.
I think that we definitely can keep having these conversations. I definitely think that, I know kids are at home. My, I have my daughter at home. I do understand. I get her up. I get her, you know, I tell her, get up, you have to get yourself ready. Her camera is on. I think, you know, it's sort of a rule I have made. I can't say that it's on all the time, but I do know the majority of the time it's on and it doesn't, you know, it's maybe not her first choice, but I think that, yeah, I don't know the answer, but I think we can...
I don't think we can rely on parents too, just to parent because the issue is you're having a difficult time telling your kid to do that when nobody else is on camera. So that's very difficult.
We definitely are going to continue to have conversations about how we can move forward during a pandemic. I mean, let's face it, we are in the midst of a pandemic. We can hope that the vaccine is going to solve all of the problems of the world, but considering that the vaccines are pretty hard to come by, considering that our teachers and staff are still not on sort of level one to receive a vaccination, I think is sort of this telling measure of where we are with the vaccination. So we're just going to keep having these conversations. We're going to continue to try to do what's right for our staff, for our students, for our, you know, our school program. And I think that that is going to certainly, I hope, you know, come to, you know, we're almost reaching a year when this happened. I'm hoping that, you know, maybe next year, the start of our, you know, false start, that things will be looking different. That's a hope, but I'm not exactly sure that things are going to be looking different anytime in the near future, within the next few months. So we just have to think about how we want to move forward. But I really appreciate everybody's input and we probably could talk about this for days, but we won't. So we are going to just move on to our next discussion. Ms. O'Brien is here. Dinah, would you like to join us and talk about the municipal projects?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for giving me. I just wanted to take up a few minutes of your time. I know you have a big agenda. But just to reach out to you all and to your audience, the municipal projects are moving forward. The selectmen did vote at their last meeting to bundle all three of the projects together. The school athletic fields, the municipal center and the senior senator community services center. They will be going to the municipal election on the 10th of April and then to town meeting on May 8th. They need to pass at both of these venues in order to move forward. We have a very good project going here. We are trying to meet the needs of the town on all levels, the schools, the municipal center and our seniors, as well as those who use our community services such as veterans recreation and our food pantry. This is the first opportunity in quite a long while that we've had to address all of these together and come together actually as a community to move forward these projects. I did have the privilege of going to the LG Norse parent teacher meeting the other evening, which was a really fun group, a lot of good people there. I'm speaking with the Yell group on the 24th of this month. So those are two of my four ways out into the school. I'm currently talking with the parent group at the Salmonaise School to try to find a mutually agreeable date that we're all available. You know, you would think during these times of being at home that no one's busy, but we are and you're still trying to get, put everybody's calendars together, which always fascinates me that we're all still this busy. Just so that you know, the building committee is meeting this coming Tuesday evening at 6:00, 7:00, I'm sorry, to discuss the two building projects. And we will be talking about the high school fields at the same time, how we're going to go forward. The selectmen will be hearing from the architect for the two buildings in this project group either on the 11th or the 18th of this month. They haven't quite settled, but everybody should really log in and view these meetings. I have been in contact with council on aging board, the board of selectmen and the school board, looking for all of your support. Building committee is willing to go anywhere you all need us to go to answer any questions and to participate on any level. It's up to the boards to really get the word out. And we know that you guys are going to do a really great job. If there's anything that we can do for you to help spread the word, please let us know. Shoot me an email, drop me a call. And that was really what I wanted to cover, just kind of to introduce myself and to say, you know, here we go. It's going to be a really quick ride, but I think it's really going to be good for the, for the town of Norton, to everybody to work together and move these forward for our community.
Dinah, would you mind if I asked? I know that not everybody, I know there's a lot of information on social media for sure in regards to the project and information about that. If people are not connected to social media platforms, is there a website? Is it on the town website? Is there somewhere where we can just sort of announce where people can receive the information?
Yes, it is on the Town Hall. It is on the Town Hall website. Yes, it is on the town hall. It is on the town hall website. And Dr. Bayard has been gracious enough to help us put it on the school, you know, to get it up on the school when the time is right. People can, you know, as I said, they can shoot me an email, you know, drop me, you know, drop a call, be more than happy to talk about it. We are on Norton for everyone on the Facebook pages. And I know it has been discussed in the Norton social media. I try to kind of lurk around and see what everybody's, what everybody's saying on that so I can keep up to date. We're looking at putting flyers that have been working with the architect on the municipal side, you know, on the building part of it, has put together a lovely four-plage flyer that includes the school fields, the town hall municipal center, and the senior community center, all in a very compact, you know, design that people can get the field, the layout, and where they're going to be. And looking forward to posting that. We're thinking about putting some pamphlets in the little library outside of the town hall, you know, the, yeah, that's what it's called, the little library, right outside of the town hall. And then, you know, because it's very odd to try to do this in a world where you can't physically go places and talk to people. So we're looking at meeting with school groups, American Legion, veterans, the recreation department, and the veterans agent have been very helpful in trying to connect us up with various groups who are still actually meeting via social media. We can get the word out.
That's perfect. Does anybody have any questions or comments, anything to add?
Just going to add, Dinah and I met, and I think one of the things, and I don't know Dinah if you're there yet, but I was trying to put together a cable show. I usually have pretty good access to Shane over at Norton Media. And so we were trying to get together a show where maybe we could use our pictures or our design models and kind of do it more like a six feet apart, like, and everybody just takes seven to 10 minutes and presents the projects each and gets it out there. So I was looking at the, I think you typically can do it around 4:15 in the afternoon. And we would go over to Norton Media through the social distancing and all that stuff and be able to stand next to, for example, in my case, I have a design, I could put it up, show X, Y, and Z, show the cost, all of that. I know you can do it on that. And I know you have it on that side too. I've seen some renderings. And then it's just there for people to know the facts. And then they make a decision on those, on whatever they think.
I think that's a perfect idea. I know I've been speaking with Charlene at the town hall about, you know, putting, seeing how we can put together communities Zoom meeting, you know, just get comments and things. But yeah, oh yeah, now, when you get that set up, please let me know. I'd love to come.
Yeah, I'll get your direct answer tomorrow, but I think we're looking at the 23rd of February.
23rd?
Yeah, at 4:15. And I'll add you into the loop. And then we can talk before then about what to bring and the best format. I mean, the idea is to just do a quick presentation that gives people, you know, a rendering of what the project looks like and then cost. And then you can always have cable just constantly rerun it for us.
Perfect.
Good idea.
Yep. Count me in.
That's a great idea. So seeing no other questions or comments, Dinah, thank you. I know this has been a lot of work. So we definitely appreciate you joining us tonight, giving us the update. And thank you for going to the different schools to also share updates with the parents in those schools as well. So.
More than happy to. They're great groups of people and really fun to work with. So thank you very much. Thank you for your support. Looking forward to working with all of you. If you need me again, give a shout.
Thank you, Dinah. Have a good night.
Have a nice night.
We are going to move to the Norton High School academic and SEL interventions. Mr. Doloman and Ms. Benner.
Everyone, so let's take a point on the presentation for this evening. If it's all right with everyone, I'm going to share my screen. This was included in the materials for this evening. I'm going to be talking about a concept primarily called MTSS. It's multi-tiered system of supports. So let me just pull up my screen for one moment. All right. You all have that? Okay, very good. So this is a concept that we've really been trying to roll out at the high school since last year. And then fast forward to pandemic hitting, it becomes all the more important. So these are the pieces I'm going to cover in tonight's brief presentation, just go over what exactly MTSS is, how it connects with our school improvement goals, and how exactly we've been implementing it at the school this year. So MTSS is, you know, just again, kind of one of those buzzwords, but it's a matter of systematizing the way that we respond to students' needs. So like I said, even these days, in a pandemic, you can imagine that our student needs have multiplied. You know, they're varied. They are sometimes difficult to quantify. So we're doing the best that we can, you know, whether in normal times or in, you know, these days to kind of fill the gaps that we need to fill with our students. So this is always a visual I like to use when discussing this concept. So really, the tiers that are a part of MTSS are the idea that, you know, different students need different level of supports. So our tier one supports are those that are built into our school as a whole, the supports that all of our students would benefit from. So for example, something like LLB, every student at Norton High is enrolled in an LLB and has that benefit of building a connection with their LLB teacher. General classroom accommodations that any teacher can implement for any student are part of, you know, tier one universal supports. Then when we get to tier two, in the best of times, that would narrow down to perhaps 5% to 10% of our school who need, you know, a more focused level of supports. The driver behind tier two at Norton High School and at many schools is what we call our student support team. So it's a body of our counselors, administrators. And this year, we've also added the additional step of involving teachers on that team to discuss individual student cases that come forward, identify what their needs are, and then match them with the services that they need, whether those needs be academic, behavioral, or social emotional. So then lastly, tier three, typically, again, that would be 1% to 5% of a school who need a layer of support even further than that. For tonight's presentation, I'm mostly going to be focusing on what we're doing on the tier two level. So the fundamental driver behind all of this is that if we match the students with the support they need, they're going to reach success. And, you know, success is, can be defined at a lot of different levels, making sure they're prepared, if their track is college, if their track is career, or just in general gaining the skills that they need to be happy and productive individuals in life. So where this matches up with our school improvement goals that we've created for NHS, so we really wanted to come in and take a look at our achievement gaps. Typically speaking, I think we all know this, that, you know, Norton is a, you know, well-performing school district. You know, the divides that our students face are certainly not that of other communities. But we do have gaps here. And so we wanted to take a closer look at our, at our student data and really drill down to just who needs more focused attention, who needs more focused supports in our school. So that is something that is again, underlying this whole process. So to drill down further, what we've done this year is really articulate what we have available for those students that struggle. So this might be a little tricky to see. I can try and zoom a little bit, but hopefully folks will be able to, the gist of this. So basically, we've again divided our different interventions into tiers. Most of them, if you're able to see this, like I said, are in that tier two range. To highlight what we've done, so for our regular ed, typically ninth and 12th graders, we've created what's called a high-risk student LLB. It's not labeled that to the students, but those students that we are really worried about, meeting academic outcomes, you know, for the seniors, that being graduation, for the ninth graders, that being, you know, the transition on to 10th grade, we've matched them with two particular teachers who have offered to take on the task of supporting those groups. I met with those folks again. We've already been doing this LLB for several weeks now, just to do a check-in. And a lot of it is really just kind of creating a strong supportive community to start their day in. They're doing some work on skill building, again, just kind of community building, having another adult support. Then we've also had some teachers who have volunteered to run subject-specific support in LLB. So that is offered in the four core subjects. So, you know, not every teacher is available yet during LLB, but again, we've kind of identified four reps for each of those departments that a student can make, you know, schedule meetings with to get more one-on-one help. You know, it's really been a challenge not having our late bus. It, you know, kind of creates a divide in terms of access for extra support for some of our students. So this was a way to offer that during the school day. Then the other largest program that we're running right now is a mentoring program. So most of the students that are involved in this program were referred by counselors, students who again, could just benefit from an additional supportive adult. So some of the relationships look a little bit different depending on the mentor or mentee match. In some cases, there's already a longstanding relationship between the student and staff member. And so that can be utilized as a jumping off point for deeper conversations about, you know, how to prioritize their academic work. You know, in some cases, we found out details about barriers that the student is experiencing in the home that we might not have, you know, have been aware of previous to this relationship. In other cases, you know, it's connecting a student who might have been more of an outlier and not particularly well-connected to any staff member at school and really making a purposeful effort to develop a relationship with that child so that they could work on whatever growth areas they needed. And then the last outreach effort really requires some further development. Right now, our idea of peer tutoring or mentoring stands to be grown, but we do have the NHS Virtual Writing Center, which our English Honor Society runs, and is an opportunity for students to support other students in their work specific to that subject area. So, you know, I would like to invest some further effort into growing our way, the ways that our students can support each other at Norton High, but that's where that area stands today. So I am going to leave the chair. And from there, if folks have questions, or if I can go over anything else in further depth, please let me know.
I just say one quick thing here too. So just, I want to thank Amy. She's been really instrumental in getting this off the ground. And I think the thing that we're really trying to do is the word that she used at the beginning, which is systematize these things so that there is sort of a process when an event happens or something happens where students in crisis or needs are identified, there's a predetermined path in order to get those students the services that they need or the interventions that will help them be successful. So it's that combined with a little bit more fine-tooth comb of data as well, where we're trying to utilize grade data, absenteeism, those types of things, as well as leveraging Panorama as a software that helps support our SST so that we can record sort of those interventions that are in there. It also collects a lot of that data, behavioral absenteeism, and also grade data. So that's kind of been what we're trying, definitely, you know, there's room to grow with all of these things. And these are definitely not some of the interventions we would necessarily have without a pandemic. But it's something that we're trying to meet those needs that we heard from our students and from our parents.
If I don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump into, just because I think this is the work that has come out of some of the work we've done around SEL and trauma. And now being able to take that sort of philosophical theoretical approach in, as Mr. Doloman said, Benner has really been the lead in sort of taking that and putting that into action along with the staff that, you know, has volunteered to take some of this on because we wouldn't be able to do that without them. But I think it really is sort of taking the theory that needed to be presented, the foundation, and now we're building on that at the high school. And Evan done a lot of work with SEL directors, you know, around the area. This is a, this is a pretty big step for a high school, especially a high school our size. So I think it's really the next piece that we can now build on and even develop some more interventions for our students.
If I could just add, I think that it is impressive. And I think, Vinny, I agree, this is certainly a big step for a high school. But I think it really does support Norton's mission to really offer support to students, that student success is really important. And we really have to have those sort of pieces in place to offer that support. I think, Ms. Benner, I thought, and I think, Vinny, you might have kind of shared it, you had said that there are reps in each department that offer support. So they're doing that as a volunteer basis? Is that, I just want to sort of send a little shout out. I think we all know that we really do have a great staff in Norton. And I hope that they recognize, especially as a school committee, as the chairperson of the school committee, how much they're appreciated. But I think it's just another representation of staff really wanting to care for the students, ultimately to offer the most optimal support systems that we can, especially during a pandemic. I mean, you know, anybody who's really following SEL, really looking at kind of crisis sort of management, those kinds of things, we know that people are struggling regardless of age during this pandemic. So having something in place, having a staff, starting from sort of administration down into our teachers, our support staff, I can't say, you know, thank you enough. I think it's a great system that you're really trying to incorporate. And I think that students will benefit. And as you shared at the very beginning, our main goal is optimal success. So thank you for all of your hard work. Really appreciate it.
I was just going to underscore one more thing, just to that point that you mentioned, and Amy mentioned it in part of the presentation. But the outpouring as far as staff involvement in our SST has been phenomenal. I mean, we regularly have 15 teachers come, you know, out of their time in order to offer perspectives on students, including, you know, teachers who are invited if they have students who are being presented or they're presenting a student. So that's been something that, again, just demonstrates sort of the commitment of the staff that they have to the social emotional well-being of all of our students. So that's been something that I think has been, you know, one of the highest leverage things that's happened this year, is those teachers being very much involved in the student.
And I think coming from the counseling perspective, I think the counselors feel that there's pieces in place now, that they can, you know, work with their peers and offer support to students in a different way, allowing some different options and getting different perspectives than maybe they just would as a counselor meeting with a student. So I think it's really built some of that feeling of team as well.
And I think one thing in Norton that we pride ourselves on is that we really do try to be leaders. And I think when we were talking about SEL years ago, when it wasn't sort of a pretty common topic, you know, we were talking about it in our district, I think we started to have these really deep discussions about how we can support our students in all sort of sections of their lives. I think that this is just another indication of that work, that SEL work. And maybe really does sort of once again put Norton as a leader in really supporting SEL and our students. So thank you for that.
Is there a way, so it's mostly teacher-driven in what the teachers see, what if a student has a concern about one of their classmates? How would that be?
So our student support team referral process has two prongs to it. If it's a teacher that is the one initiating the referral, that goes to the counselor. And then the counselor acts as a case manager and gathers more information from the whole team of teachers. A similar idea, if a student were to bring forward a concern about another student, that could go through the counselor and they kind of vet and decide if a case gets elevated to the student support team, or if there's measures that they can take just as the individual counselor to solve whatever the problem might be.
We do provide, you know, we try to encourage that throughout the year, but right now, we're in the midst with our juniors. We do a training called SOS, Time to Suicide, which is really, that is obviously an important piece of it. But it's really about identifying in your peer group or with yourself that you're struggling with some kind of mental health issue, or just in general having a hard time and making sure that they know how, the students know how to connect back up with staff or counselors. So it's part of what we try to talk about in a lot of different ways and different formats.
Yeah, I just think that's a big part, especially.
Yeah, I just think that's a big part, especially with our Norton High School population. After reading the essays that I've read for the scholarships at the end of the year over years, you see how they're more in tune to each other, obviously, than anybody else's. And I think that they need a safe way or a confidential way or whatever, just to reach out when they don't know what to do to help the person, they need a way to bring it to someone else's attention that can actually do something.
And I think some of these supports that we put in a tier two are building that idea of the staff is there, right, and making those connections and building those relationships. And, you know, maybe a student says, hey, you know what, why don't you talk to Mr. So-and-so or Mrs. So-and-so, they're really great, and that's another way of making those connections. So it all does kind of tie in together. None of these are done in silos, they all sort of build upon each other.
Just want to say, I think this is great. It's nice to see something like this, and I appreciate everyone's work on getting this going. I mean, it's always so impressive how well Norton's staff really goes above and beyond for the mental health of our students. And I do want to just say, in case there are parents on or watching this after the fact, it, we definitely, you know, we worry about our students' mental health, but I think it's just as important to think about our teachers during this time as well. I think it was Carolyn who mentioned everybody is struggling at this time, COVID fatigue is real, it's exhausting, people are done with this, and our teachers continue, and our staff, everybody, continue to go above and beyond for our students. So I think that if we can just kind of keep our teachers in mind and, you know, reach out to your child's teachers and just thank them for something that they're doing, or just reach out and say, hey, I'm thinking of you, you know, it's been a long year for these guys. And so as we're focusing on the students' emotional health, I just want to just want to mention to any parents out there, please remember, you know, your teachers, your support staff, the secretaries, the administrators, it's important to remember these guys as well, because they're really giving their all for our kids.
I could add a little more. So it's also National School Counselors Week, and all of our staff have been invaluable this year, but really to put an extra shout out to them, they've been instrumental in this system, and they often carry the stories of our students that are heaviest, and, you know, they have really been stretched and strained and tasked, act in ways that have never been so before. So to get an extra little gold star for those counselors, for sure, especially this week.
Absolutely. And just one other thing I was going to build on that, too, is just in conversations that we had with one of our teachers who's working as a mentor, too, just talked about sort of that additional weight that she has conversations with her student, and the student shares some of their problems, and that connection is so important to them, but it does really weigh down on teachers as well, is that they do feel the pain of our students, and that's something that makes our staff very special, is that they're willing to do that in order to support our students and take on that additional sort of heaviness at the end of the day or the end of the week. So again, we really appreciate what they do, and it wouldn't be possible without them.
Very much appreciate it as a parent, it's very much appreciated what each and every one of you is doing for our children.
I think it's really important, first of all, both for Ms. Spencer and Ms. Dolman, for your presentation tonight, Vinny adding your expertise, especially in the clinical area. But I think, you know, one of the things that is very frustrating right now is there's probably no group of professionals who want to get these kids back in school more than we do in Norton. But I also think we have to be understanding of, we have been successful thus far to the best that we can without having to close buildings day after day and week after week. And Norton's numbers today was a total of 41 quarantined and positive students and staff. That's one of our lowest numbers that we've had, and so if these numbers continue in this direction, we know what the next steps are. But I also have to tell you, as someone who has had plenty of back and forths with the folks that I work with through the years as a superintendent and a principal and a teacher and a union member at one time, I worry about the 400 adults that are in my district every day, because without the adults in front of kids, we are simply a correctional institution or a babysitting, we're not teaching. And I've said this a couple of times, and I know it irritates people, but the most important people in those buildings right now during a pandemic are keeping the staff safe so that we can provide the best that we can. So our goal is to open up, there's no doubt about it. I know that our staff wants us to open up, but we also have to make sure, as you know from a co-signed letter that I sent with Shannon Taylor, the Norton Teachers Association president, along with 41 area school districts, where, when are we moving these teachers up front? When are we going to be providing them what we said we were going to provide them? There is no plan for educators in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at this time. It is, go get your vaccine. What does that mean? That means no teaching in person and no teaching remotely, because you're going to be in a line at Jolent Stadium. So what's the plan? What is the plan? The frustration level that I have is vaccinating the adults is a clear process for bringing back and opening these schools full-time. That's part one. Part two, that is needed, though, is you need a plan, you need to know. And I, as you know, I gave the staff the opportunity to use the Monday afternoons. Why did I do that? Because if the teachers all are out by handfuls on Tuesday or Wednesday, you're not going to have school. Why? And that's not a scare tactic, like I did the other night that became a scare tactic about going remote because of technology. I was simply, and I'll clarify, I was trying to show, just like a snow day, if I can't predict something, I'm just giving you the heads up that we may for one day or two days have to go remote in order to solve the problem. The other part that I think is important is that when we look at the long-term plan for students, my biggest concern is the re-entry full-time with plans for social, emotional, counseling, mental health, reading and writing and arithmetic needs that we all know we're going to have, right? Big pictures. And then solving, will the taxpayers of Norton pay for? Because if you want to resolve mental health issues, you can't just go down to the clinic down the road. It has to be part of their school day. If you want to resolve their reading issues, you're going to have to do it that way. So the plans that we're working on are not just tomorrow morning, the doors open. It's doors open, it's remediation, it's acceleration, it's opportunity, it's mental health, it's transportation, it's cafeteria and eating. I mean, you can't go into a restaurant, as of Monday, they're going to go to 40%. That's not my rule, but right now it's at 25%. I'm going to have hundreds of kids in a cafeteria. These are the answers and questions and guidance issues that we're looking for. And once we get them and there's a plan, instead of saying, hey, school committee, hey superintendent, hey teachers' union, you guys figure it out, and then everybody compares us to someone else and vice versa, and we get nowhere. There should be a comprehensive statewide plan for vaccinating educators, and that's how we open up without any side issues.
You know, can I also just say, too, I appreciate you addressing this, because this is a constant issue on a Facebook page, Norton Neighbors, where I'm going to say again, for the love of God, please stop going to social media and thinking you're going to get any kind of information regarding returning to school. This is not something, you know, there's teachers on Facebook, there are school committee members who live in town, who have children that go to schools here. We are not just sitting around twiddling our thumbs, thinking, well, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we'll just let this roll. Please believe me when I tell you, we are spending countless hours, not only at school committee meetings, but in private meetings where we physically walk into the administrator's office with masks on and socially distant and have meetings. We are doing that in person to try to figure out how to make this work. We are working with the state guidelines of the distance that is required. We are doing something right. We may have some areas to work on, but we are doing a lot right. And I am begging, again, parents, please stop going on social media and comparing us, it is extremely hurtful, to people who are spending countless hours trying to keep your children safe, our community safe, and figure out a way to get kids back in school. If you have a question or a comment or a concern, feel free, I'll put it out, email me, that's fine, text me, call me, I'm fine with it. Please stay off of social media, it's not helping, it starts a frenzy, and it's very difficult for those of us that live in town and are trying to do the right thing for all of your children.
I think if I could just sort of also share, I think what you said, Sheri, is absolutely true. I don't think anybody who is associated with our district, with our school system, really wants our students not to be in school. I mean, you know, that is absolutely not our goal. I think that the one thing that we do really well, and I think that we're really proud of, is that we have a really amazing working relationship with our administrators and our staff and our school committee, that we have a union, and we're not always going to agree, there's no doubt, but we can, you know, come to the table, we can have conversations, we can compromise, we can come up with solutions and ideas, we can be imaginative when we're thinking about next steps and how we can move forward. Not every school district has that luxury, so, and I think every school district tried something different. Some districts brought their younger students back to school full-time, and their older students were fully remote. Some districts, you know, did different schedules for their students. I think in Norton, we didn't really think that there was a difference between the importance of our, you know, elementary students in comparison to our high schoolers, that we could look at the student developmentally, academically, and we could find an absolute reason why our high school students needed to be in school just as much as our, you know, first, second, and third graders needed to be in school. And I think we all know that not just sort of in Norton, not just in Massachusetts, but I think in every state, we know that we're going to have students who are going to need to have that extra support when they do come back to school full-time, that this is not an option that works for all students perfectly. So I think that that is sort of referring to what Dr. Byetta said, was we're not just going to open Norton back up full-time and say, okay, everybody, come on in. We know that there's going to be a need for additional support when it comes to social, emotional, and mental health, when it comes to all of the remediation of support for academic learning, for math, for English, for all of the sort of subjects that students are going to need, that little extra support, those little extra opportunities to kind of do that catch-up work. So we get it. I don't know, I really don't know how we could have done it any better, in all honesty, in regards to the schedule we chose. We had multiple conversations over the summer, hours and hours of conversations, really thinking and looking at schedules and how we would bring kids back. We had parents involved, we had administration involved, we had staff involved. We really sort of had a lot of different ideas and options, and we came up with, you know, an option that we thought would work best and meet the needs of our population the best. And I think, you know, again, we can all say, there's been growing pains, we hear it, we try to change things, we try to make things better, we are continually having labor management conversations so that if we can and when we can make things different, that we will make things different when it's possible to do that. So, you know, it's just been a fluid process, and it's been a difficult one for sure, but again, I will absolutely say thank you to our staff, to our administrators, to our teachers, to our support staff, to everybody who's been really on the front lines of our school system, because it has not been easy. And I'm not sure, you know, some of us can say our students are great at-home learners, and some of us can say our students are not great at-home learners. So we get it, it's an individual sort of experience for everybody, it's working better for some than for others, but, you know, we really are working to make sure that we are meeting the needs as best as possible. So.
I know that we're beating up this topic in some ways, but, you know, if there's anything that comes to mind to Amy and Ethan's presentation tonight, is that we probably need a multi-tiered systems approach for our staff in fully coming back as well. Don't forget, we have a number of staff that currently are medically out and doing the remote teaching. Don't forget, we have 323 children who are full remote learning because of medical issues, because of first responder issues, because of grandparents that they live with, because of significant medical issues that they have. When you plan a reopening, I have to plan a reopening that includes 328 children that right now are just part of the remote learning, the good and the bad of that. So, you know, when you look at this and what's happening around us, Sheri said it best, and I'll completely end it here, we are so frustrated as adults, as children, as whatever our positions are with COVID, let's get vaccinated and get back to school.
Sounds good, and we're going to end it with that, and we're going to just move on. So thank you for sort of bringing us into that conversation when we were talking about S E L, I think it was sort of a nice segue. But we are going to review and vote on the 2021 Springtown Meeting School Department Articles. Dr. Byetta?
You know, no big issue on this, this is three articles that are being filed. One would be the supplemental budgets, that will go in as one budget to the town, so when the time comes, both the municipal side and the schools have basically one vote for everybody if needed. It's a safety precaution for the district more than it is anything else. The other two articles that you have before you are everything to do with the potential to borrow for the energy management services contract, depending on what that's going to be, that's why it says TBD. And then the third one is to take a look at the sewer line connection for the Yale High School, but that is also part of the athletic complex project. So again, protecting ourselves to meet the due dates, that's why it has TBDs, the articles to do on a certain date, it was February 1st, so you could take this as one vote.
Any comments, any questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the three articles for the 2021 Springtown Meeting?
I'm just wondering, on here, it said we had to do them separately, but we can do them all together?
I think you can. In the past, you've done it, but in talking to, in talking to the town, these are, they're all, you not have a specific number. They're just articles to hold for placement, then when we go forward with the actual amount, you'll revote them.
Perfect. So is there a motion to approve the three articles as presented in our packets for the 2021 Springtown Meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm the guest. Dr. Byetta, any other business?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, really quick. I want to introduce you, and I don't know if you've seen Paul Driscoll Ofton, he's our network administrator, and Karen Wentzberg, who's his boss, are here tonight just to give you a quick update on the internet situation and some good news that we received today as well. So Paul, Karen, whoever wants to go first.
I'll be happy to start. Can you do this quickly, Karen? Is it a quick story?
I, yes, I will, I will try to be quick. I just wanted to, first of all, thank the staff and the students who were in the buildings during our most recent internet woes, and also to thank the families and students at home, because as we try to livestream and we have no internet at school, it poses a significant problem. Please know this, the technology department, our number one goal is that technology just works, right? We want technology to kind of not be the issue in the middle of this pandemic, and this was one of those things that was out of our control. Honestly, we started experiencing the attacks on the network earlier in January, and it, you know, started off slow, and then last week was just brutal. You know, looking to Comcast for assistance and getting the emergency mitigation to get us back up and running on Friday, you know, we were really optimistic that this week would be better. And then, again, we had two days where we were just down for an hour each, but it was very stressful for students, for staff, for the tech department, for sure. Today was a much better day because Comcast was able to mitigate. because Comcast was able to mitigate all attacks today. And to just give you a sense, and then I'll let Paul maybe just talk briefly. Today, we had over, I think, 37, between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, we had 32 incidents. We did not feel them at all because Comcast completely mitigated them. So unfortunately, they weren't able to mitigate yesterday for an hour, an incident, and the previous day on Tuesday. And that's, you know, we're trying to do everything that we can to prevent these attacks. But what we had in place just wasn't enough. So I'll relay it to Paul. Then he can maybe take it from there a little bit.
Yeah, there's not too much, Karen, you covered most of it. I think the biggest thing is Comcast today was able to adjust all the settings and get them right. That was the problem yesterday. They had some traffic that was still getting by their filter in the mitigation process. And today, it all worked. So I think we'll be in good shape going on. Only time will tell though. Two attacks yesterday, we still haven't gotten a full report from Comcast on exactly what they were. But they, engineers today, assured me that the adjustments they made to the template will definitely stop what was going on. They were just very, very large amounts of data coming in. And most of it was probably from Europe. And I think the change they made to the template today was they block when we're being attacked. They automatically block all traffic from outside the US. And that seemed to be the key to get it to stop.
I think it's really important. I mean, the amount of work that Paul and Karen and Nick and John, I mean, that's the core people working behind the scenes. And then you have Chris Schillingo, who's doing upfront with the teachers and the staff. But, you know, at the end of the day, all of bringing everybody and tying everybody in, first of all, we have a mitigation plan with our provider, a signed contract with them. They recognize that the emergency charges that they were giving us wasn't the best way to go around business. I want to thank them publicly for crediting us on that. That was almost $20,000. And then I think the third part is that I found out this afternoon that there are a number of other districts that actually this week, this issue started for us. It started last week and we know of at least two or three that it started pre-COVID and COVID. So lesson learned, if you will. We are asking for reports for a number of different reasons. We want to share it with state police and then potentially Homeland Security. We just think that's the right thing to do. If they can't do anything with it, then so be it. And then we will continue to work to address other means that we can to protect, if you will, for lack of a better word, and stop even from mitigation taking place. So it's insurance plan to insurance plan to insurance plan to make sure that this happens less and less every day. And thanks to all the work of the team. Appreciate it.
I just have two questions on that. The first one is, so from what we heard from before, they weren't getting any information from us. So as far as student records and all that, that was all safe. This was just to disrupt the surface, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And my second question is, so when I was substituting at one point and we lost internet, I lost my class and I had no way to tell them that I had lost them because, again, as a substitute, I didn't have the information that a normal teacher would have. I know we make the phone call home to tell everybody, but is there anything else that teachers can do? Or is there any other way that the students are told other than the phone call? Because I know at least one of us didn't even get the phone call or it came through a flurry or something. So how do we, is it just a phone call that's going home? Or what else is happening to let the kids know that this is what's going on?
Pretty much it's the phone call, text message to the families. That's, you know, the one way that we can go about doing it.
At the building level, Joe, I mean, the administrators at the building level are notifying stuff. And, you know, we're notifying and trying to keep the administrators up to date. But, you know, John O'Neill fortunately has made the calls for us when the tech department has been kind of all in trying to figure out, you know, how to resolve the issues. So if there's somebody that we're missing, that's something that we need to revisit and maybe take a look at.
I've become the queen of bad news.
You what?
I've become the queen of bad news.
Oh, just bad news. I don't know about the queen part. Kathleen, the other thing I was thinking of was, I know that you're significantly younger than me, but back in my days, we used to cancel school on snow days with the big fire station going off twice. So if you heard two honk-honks, honk-honks from the fire station, you knew that school was canceled for the day. So I was thinking maybe we could do a honk-honk for the town when, via the town, when internet goes down.
Jesus, Joe.
I like it. I think it's a good idea.
It grew up on the honk when you drop on a fire? Yeah, well, you know.
My town was.
Oink, oink, or boink, boink.
We don't have any oink, oink. It was the fire alarm that went off three times.
Right.
Can I ask a very low-tech, kind of beginner question here? What's the purpose of the DDoS attack?
Generally, it's just a disruption. They started off basically as a way to disrupt commerce. If you remember, Amazon's been attacked, Google's been attacked. Now it's become more of just a nuisance tool. It can be used to disguise other attacks, but we've looked at that and there's been no evidence of anything else coming in behind it. They try to distract you with all the extra traffic and then pull something else on the other side. More or less, it's just, it's a way to just disrupt everybody's day.
I mean, it seems like at some point they would get bored disrupting our day, right? It's been an odd one almost every single day now.
Right. So what happens is you end up, you end up in these lists that get put out to the bots that actually send all this traffic. And eventually, they move on to somebody else, which is why we're seeing schools that have had it in the past, other schools are starting to get these attacks. They can also be generated fairly cheap. I mean, you can buy a pretty big attack for a couple hundred bucks. So if you really want to disrupt things, it's not all that expensive.
Yeah, I don't know. I would spend a couple hundred bucks to accomplish absolutely nothing, right? It seems like they're just a tremendous waste of their time and hours. So I'm not making light of it because obviously it's been a pain in the butt for us. I just don't understand the point of it. And if they're looking to like glean something from us,